Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the July 26th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on August 3rd, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. So if you're an applicant or an agent of the applicant, it's not necessary. If you want to speak on an item and you're neither one of those folks, I would ask that you fill out a speaker request form located at the back of the room and turn it in up here, and I'll note it during the meeting and make sure that the comments get addressed. There's also agendas in the back bookcase as well. First item on the agenda is roll call, and note that we're all here, Les, Karen. Deb is here from the board. Approval of the July 12th, 2021 minutes. Were there any questions, changes, edits to the minutes? Did anyone see?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in second for approval of the July 12th minutes for the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is approval of today's agenda. We have items three through seven on the consent agenda, followed by regular items eight through 17, and finally 18 through 24 are end-of-meeting items and follow-up on various other items. Any changes to today's agenda? Noting none. All those in favor, or I would entertain a motion for approval, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval of today's agenda for the discussion. Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to today's consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1525 for Rushmore Shadows LLC to review a recreational resort and highway service district, and staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1525 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1634 for Mary Bits to review a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters for no more than 180 days per calendar year in a rural residential district, and staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1634 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 1720 for Melissa Masters to review a large animal mobile home veterinary practice in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1720 with conditions. Item number six is mining permit review MP 1601 for Western Construction. Tom Lean is the agent to review a mining permit to excavate, extract, and process gravel. Staff recommends approval of the extension of mining permit MP 1601 with conditions. And finally, item seven is minor plat MPL 2147 for Lorraine and Doug Smith. This land serving is the agent to subdivide and create lots one and two of RDS subdivision, and staff is recommending approval of minor plat MPL 2147 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items staff wishes to pull from the agenda?
Yes, item seven.
Item seven noted.
Yes.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the agenda?
No.
For those in the audience, the consent agenda consisting of items three, four, five, six, and seven will all be voted on at the same time. Item seven has been pulled for separate consideration. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on items three through six? Noting none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's consent agenda, items three through six, noting seven will be separate.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval of the consent agenda for their discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're at item seven.
Co-sag environmental planner. For the conditions for item seven, number six states that prior to filing the Mylar, that approval of a second approach be obtained. That approach doesn't need to be approved until the building permit process, so staff would like to remove that condition.
Item six.
Correct.
Okay. Is that the only change noted?
Yes.
Questions for staff on this? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Noting none, staff is recommending approval of minor plat 21-47 with six conditions, noting item number six is removed. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Motion in second for approval for their discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're at item eight.
Good morning, Commissioner Shutiima Sabun, Planning Department. This item is conditional use permit CU 2139 to allow an RV park on the subject property with up to six RV hookups for friends and family. This item continued from the July 6th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to today's meeting. The applicants are Paul and Carol Niemann. The property is 16.7 acres. Access is off of Cluster Gouge Road. There is no special flood hazard in the area, on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. The criteria are on the screen. Staff will read the findings. Criteria one, allowing this conditional use permit should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. The applicant stated that the proposed RV park is for personal, non-commercial use. The applicant stated that his friends and family may visit and stay in the RV park no more than two months. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the property is currently vacant of any structure. A private well will be a source of water. The applicant plans to install an onsite wastewater treatment system. Per his email, he cannot find a licensed septic installer to install the system on the property. Criteria five, access is off of Cluster Gouge Road, and approved approach permit from the county highway is required. Criteria six, the property is Zone Agriculture District. RV parks may be allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is Ranched District. Allowing this conditional use should be consistent with the current complacency plan. The requested use was routed for an interdepartmental review. County Highway Department stated that an approach permit must be obtained. This will be addressed as a condition of approval. No other major concerns or objections from other departments were received. The subject property has an existing conditional use permit, CU 1630. It was approved in 2016 to build an accessory structure prior to a primary structure on the subject property. However, the structure has not been built. The planning commission approved the extension of conditional use permit CU 1630 in December of last year to allow the applicant time to build the structure with a time limit of one year, or this conditional use permit be reviewed and ended. The applicant applied for a building permit and onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit in March 2021, but the paperwork was not completed. Therefore, both permits have not been approved. On June 15th, 2021, the applicant applied for this conditional use permit to allow a personal RV park on the subject property. Staff performed a site visit and verified that there is no structure on the subject property. Staff has not received any concerns or complaints regarding the requested use. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2139 with 20 conditions. If the commissioner has any question, the applicant is here in the audience.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff first?
Chairman.
Go ahead, Deb.
So, March 2021, what else did they ask for?
Oh, he applied for a building permit for the accessory structure.
That was in 2016.
No, that one, the conditional use permit 1630 to allow an accessory structure on the property. And then in December 2020, the planning commission approved the extension. Because that's in the Section 510, there's a condition, the requirement that the use, once the conditional use permit approved, the use must be established within one year.
Okay, and then March 2021 was what?
The applicant applied for building permit and onsite wastewater treatment construction permit.
Okay, and that never happened either?
He applied for the both permit, but the paperwork was not completed. So he stated that he could not find a licensed septic installer to help, you know, to complete the perk and profile information, so we need that to move forward.
So before he puts this on there, he has to have his septic and everything done before he has six people come visit, right?
Yes.
Okay, he just can't put them on there, and then say he can't find a person to license, and then put them on there, right?
Can you repeat?
He wants up to six friends or family on the property, so he has to have a septic before he has that many people on this property, right?
That is a condition of approval for this one.
Okay, just to make sure, because so far, and maybe Mr. Matt didn't follow through on some of this because it didn't work out, and he's going to do a cabin maybe for the people, but bottom line is, is nothing's been completed so far. So we just want to make sure if we have six people on there that we make sure he completes the septic.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Further questions for staff? Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, the reason for the six-month review versus a year or three years is to verify whether or not this septic system has been installed?
Correct.
Nice.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for staff? Go ahead, Charlie.
The only other question I had, because I think whenever you have six, whether they're family, friends, or whatever, you're going to have a certain amount, especially if they're returning type people, it'd be nice to see progress on that building permit for the building. I could see where they're going to use that right away. There'll be boats, there'll be other things coming. But my question was for the applicant, and you said he was here?
Yes.
He or she was here?
Mr. Niemann is here.
Sure. I've just got one question for you, if you would, Mr. Niemann. You have to come up and...
Yeah, if you'd come up to the podium and...
It's an easy one. I looked at your drawing and the layout, and I see the word orientation, and I don't know, are you going to give instructions to your family and friends before they could park, or?
Well, orientation would mean you pull in and don't hit a tree.
Oh, I'm with you.
And then you back your facility, your whatever RV into its position.
You're talking about a logistics type of orientation.
Well, that's kind of how I saw it.
Yeah, okay, that's all I had.
I thought I did a pretty good job of driving. You're misconstruing what's taking place here.
So go ahead and fill me in, sir.
I'm going to do my best.
Okay.
I'm not an engineer, I don't even play one on TV. So here's the situation. We tried to get this project going, and then COVID hit, and everybody went paranoid. Couldn't find builders, couldn't find diggers, nobody wanted to do anything.
That's true.
Then our governor announces to the world to come here, and they came. And now you can't find diggers that have time to do the digging. Or anyone licensed in Pennington County that isn't already stretched out for a year to two years.
Yes, sir.
So I dug and looked, looked and dug without a shovel, and finally found someone who could come up there. So you can't have the RV sites, or no, you can't have the septic system until you know how many RV sites you got, because you can't size the septic system correctly.
Right.
So to get the horse in front of the cart, I have to have approval, or not, of the RV sites, so then I can properly size the septic system.
True.
Okay? And in that we're dragging our feet, it's just that the availability of contractors is at an all-time low. They're very wealthy these days, I hear. So that's the truth of what's going on.
I've been there.
Questions?
We appreciate... Sorry, Chairman.
Go ahead.
I appreciate that, and can appreciate that with the licensed contractors, and my husband's one, but trying to find the...
Available?
Electricians, and he's fixing up a couple motels over here, some weeklys. So I can appreciate that, and the truth makes sense. So I appreciate that you gave us all the information. It just sounded like you were, okay, he started this in 2016 before COVID, and then it became 20... Do you see what I'm saying?
Contractors again. No disrespect to your husband.
Okay.
Further questions for the applicant?
Just one, but then you're still moving forward on your building permit for the structure.
We're holding our breath on this meeting. You know, there's a D6 cat there, there's a huge truck, dump trucks. I mean, we're...
You're ready to go.
Waiting.
Understood.
You know, then we got to do the perk, you know, it's sequential.
I just meant, but you're still proceeding on your building.
Oh, we're proceeding.
On your building.
Oh, yes, absolutely. It appears, hopefully, on the 15th of September, of course, again, right?
Yeah.
COVID.
Understood.
Oh, Chairman.
Go ahead.
So you're building all this for family members?
Yeah, I don't know if I even like them that much, but yeah.
What a guy.
What's that again?
What a guy.
I hope they think that when I'm gone, but we'll see.
So you're building, accessory building is the...
Is the beginning of, and then there'll be a house, and they get to use it and abuse it and...
And then six sites. So you all have a house and six sites for your family?
Yep.
You must have a family as big as mine, then.
Well, when we get together, there's about 100 of us.
Wow.
Further questions for the applicant?
You gonna have 100 people out there?
16 acres.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Niemann.
We have a speaker request form on this from Christine Van Ness.
I have the property right across the street, Lot M there, and another one, 28, 20 and a half acres there. And I just want to ask the applicant if there is going to be someone on site as a manager or something to kind of see if these people are doing the proper things, if they're not building fires out in the open and that kind of thing. Because my concern is, anytime you get a bunch of people together, and they're friends, and there's no one there that kind of watches over, you know, they can start fires out there and not be enough Forest Service-approved fire ring or whatever, and maybe the grass isn't mowed and it gets away. We've had two fires on our property from people that weren't even supposed to be there, and there's been one back behind Black Forest Inn, huge fire. So that's my biggest concern, is the safety for the rest of the neighborhood, just to be sure of that.
But Chairman?
Go ahead.
This is a conditional use permit, so Mr. Niemann has to follow the rules and regulations of the conditional use permit, otherwise it can be revoked.
Right.
So it sounds like he has a lot of family going there, and hopefully, has he been respectful so far, because he hasn't had any complaints?
Right.
So up to this point. But in the future, I say to the neighbors, be respectful, go talk to Mr. Niemann, tell him what the issues are, then when he doesn't want to comply, I mean, with reason and respect, then you have to come to us for the conditional use permit. But if those things that you're talking about have issues, makes sense?
Right, yeah. In the past, and I think the rules must have changed, but back when we bought our property, you had to have a residential structure first before you could do any of these other things.
Right.
And that has changed, you're saying?
Yeah, you can have conditional use permits probably back when you were there, too, but we do have accessory structures and different things that we have moved forward with, because people like their family out there and different people, so, yep. But the main thing, he hasn't had any complaints, as you said, so far.
Right.
So I think he's been a good neighbor to you.
Yeah, absolutely. But, you know, once you open it up to 100 friends, and the other thing is, once you make that driveway accessible, you gravel it, you make it accessible, I know from my place, people are pulling into my driveway all the time. And once he does that, there'll be random people driving in there, oh, I thought this was Forest Service, blah, blah, blah. So, I mean, he just needs to be aware that that will happen.
Yep, just communicate with him.
Yep.
Ma'am, that's what we usually do with our neighbors, and they seem to do real well when we visit with them, and we find that solution of what's going to be the best for it, so.
Is there going to be electric service to each one of those sites and water?
I don't know the answer to that. We can have... He's shaking his head, no.
No.
No, no, no. I was looking.
So I don't know if I can answer that question, we can have him come up, but before he comes up and you guys are there at the same time, do you have any other specific questions so we can get them all done at one time?
Is there a precedence for this in the county already? RV sites without residents?
Is there what?
A precedence.
Do you already have conditional use permits?
Have this happened before, so...
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
There's one on Mystic Road, been in place for 10 years, I suppose. He has seven sites on the Mystic Road, and it is a family situation, only family can use it, and it's been operated correctly. They're good folks.
Good, good, excellent. Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So Mr. Niemann, if you would come back up and we can maybe get some of her questions answered, you can sit down, you don't have to both be there at the same time.
Okay, so which, what's the first question?
Are there electric, going to be electric?
There'll be full-service hookups to all of them.
Oh, full service, okay, great.
Yes. Water, sewer, and electricity, maybe even internet, I don't know, if internet's available.
Good luck with that.
Okay.
There's probably not even cell service there. Have you tried that?
We've owned it for a few decades, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions that you have?
No, that's it.
As far as security goes, there won't be anybody on that land but us.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2139 with 20 conditions.
Removed. Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item nine.
Item nine is conditional use permit CU 2143 to allow a multifamily dwelling on the subject property. The applicants and landowners are Kenneth and Karen Wilson. The subject property is 10 acres and is located at 23956 Rockview Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in the review of conditional use permit applications. The criteria are on the screen. Staff will read the findings. Criteria one, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, a multifamily dwelling is a residential use. The requested use should not change the residential use of the property. It should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the area. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development and improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the proposed multifamily dwelling unit will utilize the existing onsite wastewater treatment system, or necessarily utilities appear to be in place. Criteria five, access is off of Rockview Road via an existing approach. The applicant provided a road easement agreement with Forest Service. The requested use should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Criteria six, the property is Zone Agriculture District. Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, Section 303, allows multifamily dwellings with an approved conditional use permit. Criteria seven, the future land use of the property is Ranched District. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current complacency The property consists of a single-family residence with an attached garage and a barn. It has an onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit and a valid operating The requested use was routed for an interdepartmental review. County Addressing Coordinator will assign a second address for the proposed second dwelling. County Environmental Planner stated that the existing septic system is sized properly for the request. The applicant also needs to obtain an approval from the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, DANNR. Staff comment, the applicant provided the approval letter from DANNR to the planning department. Forest Service gave comments regarding the use of the Forest Service land. This will be addressed as a condition of approval. Staff performed a site visit and... Staff performed a site visit and verified that the applicant has complied with the requirement of section 303. The applicant stated that the proposed second dwelling is for his father-in-law. Staff received an email of support from the applicant's neighbor. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2143 with eleven conditions. If the commissioner have any questions, the applicant is here in the audience.
Thank you, are there any questions for staff on this? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2143 with eleven conditions, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're on item ten.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thonison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number ten is conditional use permit 21-44. The applicant is Michael and Janine Wagner. The requested use is to live in a recreational vehicle while building a single-family residence on the subject property. Their, his agent is Frank Smeele. Location is on Calumet Road and Dakota Road, located at the end of Dakota Road. Subject property is 10.09 acres, zoned agriculture district, access is off of Dakota Road and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. There are seven criteria that the planning commission may consider when approving or denying conditional use permits. They are on the screen, I'll read their, the staff's findings. Starting with number one, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare of the public, especially considering the temporary nature of the applicant's request. Number two, requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. However, staff cannot predict the effect of, the effect of property values in the neighborhood. Number three, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of surrounding property in the area. Number four, access is off of Dakota Road. The applicant plans to either move the RV off-site for pumping or to utilize a portable tank caddy system as a means of wastewater disposal. The applicant has stated the waste will be disposed of at Cabela's or another local pump station. Staff also did note that a significant amount of dirt work has been accomplished on the property without an approved stormwater permit. Number five, living in an RV while a residence is being built should not impact traffic congestion. However, the applicant will need to obtain an approved approach permit for access off of Dakota Road. Number six, the property is zoned agriculture district, living in an RV while building residence is an allowed, is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. And lastly, number seven, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture district, allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County environmental planner did state that the property included in this proposal currently has a valid onsite wastewater treatment system construction permit. And that is for a 1,500 gallon tank as well as a 495 square foot conventional trench style drain field. Any future plans to construct, upgrade or modify the onsite wastewater treatment system must meet section 204J. This is included as a condition of approval. Emergency services also had a comment that if approved, the county would want to ensure that a proper street sign is installed at the intersection of Calumet Road and Dakota Road. And also that an address be assigned to the RV. No other significant concerns or objections were received. Staff did perform a site visit last week and found that there is no road name, or road name sign at the intersection of Calumet and Dakota Roads, that the property is vacant of permanent structures and utilities, that an RV is parked on the subject property, and that a significant amount of dirt work has been accomplished on the property. And you can see that in the picture here on the screen, uh, where this portion has been improved, there are two access points off of the applicant's driveway. And there is a significant amount of runoff, stormwater runoff down his access routes. And this is all, these are all addressed as conditions of approval. And lastly, the applicant has stated that he plans to either move the RV off-site for pumping or to utilize a tank caddy system. Staff does not believe moving the RV off-site is a viable option given the conditions of the applicant's driveway and Dakota Road. As you can see, it's a pretty rough road there. Portable waste tank caddy systems are not approved method of wastewater disposal in Pennington County, and this is also addressed as a condition of approval. Staff has not received any complaints regarding the requested use and recommends approval of conditional use 21-44 with conditions.
Any estimate on the amount of dirt work that's already been done?
I'm sorry, sir?
Is there any estimate on the amount of dirt work that's already been done?
Uh, I would estimate more than 10,000 square feet.
We'll hold tight.
Something went down the drain, huh?
Yeah. Uh, questions for staff on this one item?
And the applicant is in the audience, if you have questions for him too?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion?
Yes, just one, when you say, um, we're moving for approval, I assume you guys are going to stick by your guns on the tank caddy system?
That's correct, yeah, one of the conditions of approval was that he puts a port-alet out there.
Okay, that's the only concern I had, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, and then my clarification would be, so is there a plan in place from the county to address the amount of dirt work that's been done? Do they have to get a grading permit?
That's correct, that's a condition of approval as well.
Create a SWIP, all this stuff?
Right.
Erosion controls?
Stormwater permit, yes, sir.
Okay. Any concerns from the applicant on these items?
I haven't received any concerns.
Okay. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're on item 11.
Agenda item number 11 is layout plan 21-45 to reconfigure lot lines and create lots 2A1 and 2B1 of Battle Creek Mountain Estates. The applicant and landowner is Jared Milner. His surveyor is Auspex Incorporated Surveyors, um, he's in the audience, if you have any questions for him. Property location is 13704 Highway 40. Proposed properties are 9.54 acres, access is off Highway 40, there's no special flood hazard area on the property, currently zoned rural residential district. Just the land use is residence, is residential and vacant. Property history, you can see the current, uh, current plan on the left-hand side of your screen as it sits today and then the proposed plan on the right. As it sits today, project lot 2A, which is on the left, is 3.02 acres, contains a single-family residence as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. And there is a conditional use permit that was approved in 2019 for a vacation home rental on that property. Lot 2B on the right-hand side is 6.52 acres and vacant of anything. Proposed lots, lot 2A1 will become 6.031 acres, contain the single-family residence and onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot 2B1 will be 3.505 acres and will remain vacant of any structures or utilities. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review, no objections or concerns were received. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area.
Are there any homes or anything that are served by the access road to lot 2B further north?
I believe there are, yes.
Okay, so then that's the reason why the access easement is split about the property line?
Correct.
All right, further, further questions for staff?
I saw that too, Rich, thank you.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff recommends.
I move for approval.
Thank you.
My second, sorry.
Motion in second for approval of layout plan LPL 2145 with eight conditions, further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, item 12.
Agenda item 12 is layout plan 21-48 subdividing, create lots 2R1 and 2R2 of Grover subdivision. The applicants are Kevin and Jeanette Grover. Location is 13381 Silver Mountain Road. It is 10.65 acres, zoned rural residential district. Access to the new proposed lot is unknown. There's no special flood hazard area on the subject property. Again, you can see the current property on the left-hand side of your screen, proposed lots are on the right, regarding the one on the left. Lot 2R is 10.65 acres, contains a single-family residence as well as an equipment building, three guest cottages and an onsite wastewater treatment system. I did speak with the applicant this morning and he stated those, those guest cottages were constructed in the 50s and 60s, they're not utilized in a, any kind of living quarters manner, they're just storage sheds at this point, so there is, uh, no need for an onsite wastewater treatment system for that. And he did also come up and pay for his operating permit this morning as well, so we'll be removing that condition of approval. Proposed lots on the right-hand side of the screen, lot 2R1 will be 7.65 acres, contain the single-family residence, equipment buildings and all three guest cottages as well as the onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot 2R2 will be vacant and no access is identified on the layout plan for this property and that's, uh, included as a condition of approval. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County environmental planner stated that he does not have the current onsite wastewater treatment system operating permit, but again, we did resolve that this morning. Any future plans to upgrade, alter or repair the onsite wastewater treatment system needs to meet section 204J, the Pennington County zoning ordinance, and that is included as a condition of approval. No other objections or concerns were received. And with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, questions for staff?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Did you say they did have an access for, um, 2R2?
2R2, the, the new created proposed lot down below, no, there is not, and he'll need to do that as a condition of approval.
Okay, so, do we usually approve a lot with no access to it?
For the layout plan, um, I felt that was adequate to identify that, you need to do that moving forward.
Just in case, Jason, if he sells it or does something with it and then there's no access to it?
Absolutely, yep, this is the layout plan, so this is just a preliminary look at his plan and moving forward, he'll have to definitely have that for the minor plot.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 2148 with ten conditions, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, on item 13.
Cody Stack, environmental planner. Item 13 is vacation of easement VE 21-01. It is to vacate and relocate a portion of a waterline easement on lot M3 of Deer Park subdivision. The applicant is John Colasa. Access is off of Highway 385 and the location is 9910 West Highway 44, sorry, Highway 44. Current land use is residential, there is an existing double-wide mobile home and two detached garages. This was right around for interdepartmental review, there were no major comments or concerns ever received. The applicant has applied to vacate and relocate a portion of a waterline easement. The existing waterline easement did not, uh, was not put within the, the existing waterline was not put within the boundaries of the current easement. By vacating and relocating a portion of the easement, the waterline will now fall within that easement. High Seagull Meadows Water Incorporated has approved the modification to the waterline easement, and the request will bring an existing structure that was built within the easement into compliance, so staff is recommending approval of vacation of easement VE 21, or 21-01.
Thank you, questions on this one? Confirm no one in the audience wishes to speak on this one? Staff recommends approval of vacation of easement VE 21, 20-01, wouldn't it be 21-01?
Yes, it's supposed to be 21-01.
Okay, so note that change in the recommendation in the staff report, um, with one condition, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Say again. Motion in second for approval, further discussion?
Chairman. Cody, did you say they were going to put in a sprinkler system? And this, isn't this one of them, that, that's one of the conditions?
That's, uh, item 14 for Lindsey.
Thank you.
Yep.
Noting no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're on item 14.
Item 14 is vacation of plot VB 21-04. It is to vacate plot notes 7, 8, 9, 13 and 14 for lot 1 block 3 Mountain Middle subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Brian and Michelle Lindsey. Access is off of Abigail Drive or actually, sorry, Eleanor Drive. And currently the property is vacated and zone planning in development. A little history, on June 6, 2008, the board of commissioners approved layout plan LPL 20-. It's supposed to be, oh, or 2008-8. And that, it says that engineered plans to meet fire flow not less than 1,000 gallons per minute for two hours or offer alternatives to be reviewed or approved by the county fire coordinator. For number B, or for, on December 2, 2008, the board commissioner approved the preliminary plat and condition three states that prior to the final plat submitted a note be placed on the plat to read prior to obtaining a building permit for residents of any of the properties. Two suitable onsite wastewater system areas must be identified with accompanying percolation tests and soil profile holds certified by a registered professional engineer or licensed plumber. Soil profiles must show that the proper soil separation can be obtained as outlined in state administrative rule 74530115, and percolation tests must meet acceptable rates as shown in state administrative rule 74530132. This was right around for interdepartmental review, the county environmental planner came back, you should have received a, a copy of that, and I'll just summarize instead of reading through all of it. Basically, what he states is that due to the location of the properties being over the Madison Aquifer and the poor soils in the area, uh, that he would not recommend favorably to approve the proposal to vacate plot notes concerning the use of advanced treatment units as part of the onsite wastewater treatment system. So the applicants are looking to vacate notes 7, 8, 9, 13 and 14. Note 7 and 9, uh, state that prior to the issuance of a building permit, you need two onsite wastewater sites, uh, identified by the percolation test and soil profile hole, and it has to be completed by a, um, registered engineer. Since the time that this plot was created, we have 204J now, where we actually have an environmental planner who, uh, looks at soil profile and verifies, um, the percolation tests. So, uh, staff feels that 7 and 9 can be vacated. Uh, note 8 states that the advanced treatment units are required to be installed due to environmental planners' concerns, staff would oppose vacating this note. And notes 13 and 14, uh, state that after 65 building permits have been issued, surety for increasing the water storage is guaranteed. At the July 20th, 2021 Board of Adjustment meeting, uh, the applicant obtained an, a variance, uh, to not increase the water storage. And two other properties have had, uh, notes 7, 9, 13 and 14 vacated, uh, their request to vacate note number 8 was denied in a previous request. So staff is recommending approval of vacation of plot VP 21-04 with two conditions. And the number one condition that notes 7, 9, 13 and 14 be vacated only for lot 1 block 3 Mountain Middle subdivision.
Thank you, questions for staff on this one?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Three A on page three of three says variance to increase water stores for domestic use for fire protection. I thought these are the people that we asked if they were doing sprinkler, and they said yes.
They they are. So that's how they were able to vacate these notes on here is because the board of adjustment vacated that that note. They're not requesting to vacate the sprinkler.
Okay, so the fire protection, I thought, was the sprinkler.
The fire protection is the is the sprinkler, but that's not one of the notes that are on here that they're looking at vacating.
Okay, sorry, because this is, it's not one of, say again, it's not--
It's not one of the notes. The notes that they're looking at vacating involve just the increasing the water storage and the septic.
Okay, so maybe put that on there, maybe Cody, when you're, so we know, because I thought you didn't, I--
Yeah.
I thought you messed up on the variance. How about that? So, thank you, Cody.
Yep.
Further questions for staff? Noting none. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of vacation of plat VP twenty-one dash zero four with the two conditions, noting that number eight would not be included. That is correct?
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Everyone.
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion. Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item fifteen.
Item fifteen is conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash thirty-eight. It is to allow eight food trucks to be parked and operated on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is David Miller. Staff is recommending to continue conditional use permit CU twenty-one dash thirty-eight to August ninth, twenty twenty-one planning commission meeting at the applicant's request.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second to continue twenty-one thirty, CU twenty-one thirty, CU twenty-one dash thirty-eight to the August ninth planning commission meeting. Further discussion. Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item sixteen.
Good morning, commissioners. Again, item sixteen is preliminary plat P P L twenty-one forty-six to create lot twelve R revised of block five of North Dell subdivision. The landowners are Jess and Kendra Kellogg. The surveyor is Davis Engineering. This this lot will straddle both Pennington and Mead counties. The lot size of lot twelve R revised is one point two four acres. That is going to be the size of the lot that is in Pennington and Mead counties. The other lot that's being created, lot A revised, is in Mead County only. The property is currently zoned suburban residential. This was routed around through the interdepartmental review process. There was a couple of items of concern that came back. The highway department did receive an approach permit off of Merritt Road, and a variance for the second approach from Saratoga, Sogato, excuse me, Saratoga Road must be obtained from the board of commissioners. That is part of a condition of approval. The layout plan was approved by the board of commissioners. So staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plat, as staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and current land uses in the area.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this? Noting none. Is there a motion for approval for preliminary plat P P L twenty-one dash forty-six?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion.
You guys are quick to the draw.
What's that?
People don't, like on the commission, we just like move approvals second. You guys are like, who's gonna say it?
Further discussion.
I mean that in a good way.
I know.
Very kind. I mean, we're kind, but--
Noting no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seventeen.
Item seventeen is telecommunications facility permit TC twenty-one dash zero three to allow a three hundred foot self-supporting telecommunications tower and equipment shelter on the subject property. This request was continued from the July twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting in order for the applicant's agent to appear to answer questions, and he is on Zoom at this time. So he is available to answer any questions. He did submit a letter to the commission regarding the site selection.
Okay.
Already crossed him off.
Okay.
Quick questions for staff on this one?
Oh, yes. This letter indicated, it sounded as if there was no place he could put it.
That was one of the requirements in the ordinance, so that is his determination.
I'm sorry, what?
That is one of the requirements in the ordinance, so that they required them to look at all surrounding areas. So this letter is in response to that requirement.
I see, I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just had a couple of things. One, it'd been nice to see the elevations in the Rockerville one. We saw an elevation of forty-three seventy, and that particular tower was a hundred and eighty or eighty-four feet. And now we're looking at fif-- about fifty-two hundred, which I really struggled to find that one, but about fifty-two hundred feet, and we're looking at a three hundred foot tower. But did you find any other relative elevations anywhere?
No, this is the only elevations. This is for that site right now that we have.
All right. And then the AT&amp;T mobility statement, and that's a requirement. And from talking to the gentleman, and I don't remember his name, Brittany, from the emergency services when we talked on Rockerville.
Ted.
He indicated to me that their equipment is such that it operates somewhat differently than what's on a normal tower, and that it's a different, what would I call it, vintage or it's different equipment than they use than than the AT&amp;T or normal operators Verizon, whoever, T-Mobile uses. Is is that correct? And do they, in other words, if AT&amp;Ts needs a three hundred foot tower, does our emergency services, do you know that?
So for the emergency services tower, the one in Rockerville, that was for radio communications. So that's different than cellular communications.
Okay, so this one is just to improve the cellular in that area, which could be either.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I had others, but they they solved it with their little submission here. They hadn't done that, and and I agree. One of the things I would like to note there, and I did note to you, there is another property within a mile as the crow flies to this that would actually qualify for your administrative review instead of the the permit thing, I believe, and I pointed that out to you. It's off of Pink Mountain. And what's his name? Jonah, did you hear me? I'll tell you where it's at. And the property, why I refer to this, is that property is ag, I believe it's forty acres or more, and it also supplied fill dirt and black dirt to the last contractor that worked on sixteen. And it's a direct access off of Pink Mountain, which is a county maintained road. And totally, very much out of sight. You'd have to look between two hills to to see your tower base anyway. But whether that was ever considered.
Do you know where that site is relative to the one that we're discussing?
I pointed out Brittany was going to try to get the property owner's name so you could see that. It's a really nice piece of property, and and it certainly is not on the main scenic byway of sixteen.
I think I think the challenge with with this prop, with this particular site and why it's located where it is, is that we're trying to do a couple of things. We're trying to service an area that's going along three eighty-five as well as south on sixteen. And because they kind of sit in a ravine and that Three Forks Junction has a lot of high, you know, topography around it, that is why that area was selected. So it it might seem like a small move to move a tower one mile, but it really can have a pretty huge impact on the RF propagation and the ability for that frequency to make it up and around and over hills. And really, the the site is all targeted on on providing service to the most number of people possible. And so AT&amp;T had a pretty strict search ring. You know, they go out and identify, normally it's a half-mile radius search ring, that they need their site to sit within that it that radius to be able to meet the qualifications that they need for FirstNet. And so I I understand a mile doesn't seem like that far of a move, but it can actually have a pretty huge impact on the ability for that site to propagate and to provide coverage for different customers.
Jonah, just just to throw in, it does seem similar elevation. And I didn't research that one. I had to do my own research on the elevation. I didn't have any idea what I was looking at. But it is, it is there, and I would say the property owner certainly seemed to be conducive to working with people if they'd sell fill dirt and like, especially topsoil in the Black Hills.
Yeah, and and then I guess I would just add one other note on that. There's there's essentially what boils down to being about a hundred and eighty-day process previous to being able to build a tower with regulatory and permitting. We go through a full NEPA. We go through the state historic preservation office. There's, you know, a twelve-step process for environmental review that we have to, we have to adhere to, not to mention, you know, getting a lease and getting easements and all those things. So because of the timeframe which we're under, and because of the obligations that FirstNet has with AT&amp;T, I think it would be unrealistic to throw out everything that's happened up to this point and pursue a new site. And I can't really speak exactly to that specific location you're mentioning because I don't know precisely where it is. But I would say that that would provide, that would, that would present a pretty insurmountable timeframe for us to be able to be under the the FirstNet's expectations.
I don't mean to disagree with you, but I'm I'm the same feeling about throwing our ordinance that was developed with engineers like AT&amp;T and and the our citizens, as well as the planning commission, as well as our board of commissioners. In other words, you're kind of throwing that to the side because the the ordinance itself does allow for you to look at other sites after you've been approved. I know it's a lot of work. I'm sure it's a lot of work. That was presented from day one, back in the day when they wrote this. But let me go on. Is the tower lighted?
So tower, the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration requires towers to be lighted that are above two hundred feet. So there would be a a blinking light at the top of the tower.
Okay, and then, and that's going to impact quite a few of the housing or residential places around there. I just wanted to note that. Just for the the board, you know, if you look on page one thirty-two of our ordinance, they they have section A through H, and and we're really, really being flexible about this, and we're doing it because of the emergency. And I I just see we're throwing things to the side. If you read those rules that we're supposed to be doing under the print, it's very flexible. And then the last thing, your photos that you submitted for that the other request, they sure don't seem to be a three hundred foot tower. The elevation increase from almost all three of those photos to the base of your tower is around fifty feet higher yet that your tower base is going to be from that. And you're talking a tower that's twenty to twenty-three stories tall, three times an Alex Johnson building downtown Rapid City. And that's your, and your own report shows that the trees are at thirty-five feet. I don't think that gives a real accurate visual picture. I think somebody, you know, either inadvertently has installed the wrong number. That's about half the height, in my estimation, of what a three hundred foot tower is going to look like on that corner.
The tower from any one of those pictures is set back pretty far relative to the angle. What we were trying to do is capture the angle from what we thought would probably be significant landmarks. So we went over to the Prairie Berry Winery. We went over from the 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 Three Forks Country Store, and then from across the other side of the road to the property. So I do think that it can be a little bit deceiving exactly how tall that structure would be and how high it would rise based on the perspective that you have. Now, we try to make it as perfect of a science as we can, but, you know, without like a drone to survey the land and and without going going to kind of, you know, above and beyond steps, it's maybe not going to be an exact science. But we do do our very best to use the geometry and to use the geography of the area to make it a realistic depiction of what would be where the tower would sit. So I guess that's that's the best answer I can give for that one.
Okay, and and I guess the best I I can give you is that that's about a fifty-foot elevation increase from that parking lot to the base of your tower. And in my estimation, there's no way that that's three hundred feet on top of that, because that would have to be three hundred and fifty feet from where you're standing. And yes, the setback is some, but it's not much when you compare output, you put a twenty to twenty-three story building in there, I guarantee you that tower's considerably shorter, the picture of it. Because that's, and do you disagree with me? A three hundred foot tower is a twenty to twenty-three story building.
Yeah, a three hundred foot tower is 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 relatively tall. It's it's not that massive in our world, in the tower world. You know, many communication towers, three hundred foot is is basically standard. But I do, I appreciate your your concerns about the height.
Anyway, and and that's been our biggest thing in the ordinance. You'll see there are many, many references to the amount of property. You also had to get a variance in case it was to fall. Rapid City had to take their three hundred foot tower, and they took it down, I believe it in half because of ice falling off on onto firemen. It was alongside a fire station. So things can come up out of these things that we don't think of. And three hundred feet is is a lot at Three Forks Corner. I just, I I just can't believe we're putting it there when there's other available pieces that might take longer. But as you said, then we're in trouble with our emergency money, aren't we?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it's, you know, I like to add the human component. I I don't think it's all just based around money. I do think it's a legitimate need. You know, we've had conversations with the firefighters with from Pennington County with EMTs and the Sheriff's Department, and all of these people are really strongly advocating for this. So I do think that it will be a great public service to Pennington County. I understand why the three hundred feet seems it's it's a turnoff. And ultimately, we did everything we could to make the tower work at a shorter height, but it wasn't going to work with FirstNet's obligations to to cover the stretches of highways that they needed to. And so that was why at that point, we we had to pursue a higher, a higher tower, because it wasn't going to be tenable to have a reduced height and to be able to cover the footprint that's needed by FirstNet.
Thank you. And I I understand that you're not in control of the drop dead dates on the money. I I appreciate that, Jonah. But I do think that the the other site that I just proposed would certainly do a lot to get me off of the three hundred foot tower. Thank you.
Chairman.
Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant?
Chairman.
Or staff? Go ahead. Deb?
So Jonah, right?
Correct. Yep.
So Jonah, that is kind of a nice area, and that's a big tower, and and I appreciate that you're putting the tower there myself because we need the service. I appreciate Charlie's consideration and all the work he's done as well. So, but we went through Colorado, if you remember, Brittany, and they did, when you have it in an area like this, they usually, without sounding too weird, they decorate it, meaning they turn it to make it look like a tree or whatever. That's a big tree, but they do some little bit of just, not just a tower. And that is kind of an area that is entertainment, is a good way to put it. Have you guys decided to make it, you know, ever make one that actually looks, you know, decorative or something that for that area?
Yeah, over by, yeah, one one tower, I might point out that one that you're talking about over by High Seega within Pennington County, Pennington County, American Tower, which is a tower company, has what what we call a monopine. It's it's more of a stealth design tower. The the challenge that we face with these is is monopines and stealth design towers really aren't designed to go above a hundred and fifty and really two hundred feet at the max. Another one that is similar to that is over kind of off of three eighty-five going towards Nemo, you may have seen. But I guess I would just try to visualize a three hundred foot pine tree. It would, I I would argue it stand, it would stand out far more than than just a tower itself. You know, one of the questions I often pose to people when when they're struggling with the aesthetics of having a tower in their location is, are you able to tell me where the nearest tower to your house is? Now, some people know, and some people have, you know, recognized that. Now, some people know and some people have, you know, recognized that, but most of the time these structures for as large as they can be and for, you know, as much as we think about it, most people don't notice them. They become a part of the cityscape, they become a part of the landscape. And, you know, the, I guess, the incremental disadvantage of having something that's maybe not as visually pleasing in an area is for most people we find outweighed by the impact of being able to have connectivity.
If you put that, if you put that on my hill and you light it up and it's dark green, it'd look cool. So just I I I think it's cool when you add something to the area as well. I I'm not in disagreement with towers. I'm just going to tell you, but I just thought it'd be cool for aesthetics to do something cool on it if you're going to make it look that big and that tall. I'm not against that, but it I guess I like to decorate stuff and I did do Christmas lights for Rapid City. I'll just say that in the time. It's just cool and that's an area where they're trying to attract people and stuff. And I just thought, well, if you guys can do a tree, that'd be something to give them talk. So if you can't do that, Jonah, that's fine, but I think it's well needed. I am on the fire service board. We've been talking about it for a while, so it's something well needed and you guys know better than we do if that tower, where's the best place to put that tower through engineering and just your your what you do, meaning for cell service. So I believe that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. And I would just add, I think in response a little bit to something that Charlie had mentioned a little earlier, we we went ahead and even though the county didn't specifically require this, we went ahead and had the the steel engineered so that it fails in such a way that it won't fall outside of 100 foot radius. So towers are never, you know, we all pray and hope that they won't fall and it's very rare, especially self supporting towers, their most secure a style of tower for them to fall. But in the event that they do, you know, if there's 50, you know, if there's five inches of ice loaded on this tower and then a tornado blows through, there's a possibility that it could fail. But we have specifically went ahead and had it designed and engineered so that it fails at a height and in a way that it will fall within our lease footprint.
But if it fell, if it fell and looked like a tree, it'd look better. I could harass you.
That's okay.
All right. Charlie, I appreciate everything you asked and and I'm not making fun of that at all. I appreciate you as a commissioner asking the questions you do, sir.
No, I understand and I support the emergency service. I'm just saying I think a little more homework could have been done on this and we don't have it on a scenic byway sitting there 300 feet, especially with the light. And I know an awful lot of our citizens are not following this. And when that light goes off the first time, I hope you guys have got some drape money for drapes for the women that are going to be fit to be tied when it starts blinking through their windows in the evening. And you know what I mean, Jonah? These things are not little lights. These are are very intense lights and we're going to impact quite a bit of housing in this particular area. Thank you.
Sure, sure. And I I would say that our lessor, which is Roland and Donette Owens, who own that little coffee shop there, that's that's something that we've had a lot, you know, quite a few conversations with them about because they live just across from this property and they live next to, I'm not going to remember their last name off the top of my head, but another landowner that lives on that north side. And so we've been transparent about that. We've talked with some of these local landowners and brought them up to speed so that it shouldn't come as a huge surprise. And obviously, those people, you know, we were required to send them out notifications, send out letters, anyone that fell within a certain radius of where the tower was go to notify them of this. There's a sign out there that talks about it being in planning and zoning. And so we hope that the locals have had an opportunity to to recognize that this is something that's being considered.
I'm sorry, Chairman.
Go ahead.
I've talked to some of the locals and they're they're wanting that cell service so and they want that that tower. So like you said, we went through Wyoming and didn't notice any of the towers until we're coming back for some reason. And they have tons of towers in Wyoming. So for some reason, just kind of like billboards, unless somebody really pointed it out, then you start noticing stuff. Other than that, it's it's kind of weird how you don't notice. But Charlie's right, if there's a big light or something on it, they might affect the landlords. But Jonah, you did your due diligence by talking to those landowners, so we appreciate that. But you're right, a lot of times you don't notice these things unless, kind of like when I had a billboard issue in the city, didn't really notice where all the billboards were until someone pointed it out to me. So I think it's kind of like the towers, we need the service.
Further questions for the applicant? Further discussion? With that, staff recommends approval of telecommunications facility permit TC 21-03 with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion?
Just one thing, I I'm going to support this thing. I support what you're trying to do. I support the increase in the cell service and I hope you guys keep going because I already stated, I think you've collected enough taxes over the years that this has been going on, let alone the 911 service. But I especially want to support it because of the emergency. But we've got to think and plan ahead on these things where these these 300 foot towers, this is massive. It's not a funny deal when it gets up there, you see. I I know we're going to hear phone calls from it.
Chairman, one more thing.
Go ahead.
Is the future satellite technology where they won't need towers or will they still need towers with satellite communication? Jonah, do you know?
Yeah, one of the services that people are talking about right now that's kind of in the news is Starlink. That's one of Elon Musk's new services he's launching with satellite. But even satellites need to communicate with base stations on the ground. And so towers aren't going anywhere anytime soon. At this point, satellite technology is not in a place where it can penetrate through walls as well, nearly as well as cell antennas can can propagate inside of buildings. So I would say that the future of satellite invalidating towers is something's going to have dramatically changed that we can't foresee right now, but they'll probably work in harmony. There'll be some integration between the two pieces of infrastructure.
Thank you, Jonah.
Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 18.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Want me to take the lead?
Yeah, so item 18 had to do with.
So I wanted to take some time on an agenda that was not as comprehensive as some of the ones that we've had recently to discuss some of the items that have continued to come up. And I guess I have a conversation with the group about them and that some ideas that have been discussed, Charlie came up with a list of some items that on CUPs, et cetera, that that we've talked about in some instances, based on locations, we've we've adopted and others we haven't. But I think it would be good for us as the board to provide some feedback to staff on these items and maybe these can just start to be incorporated as standard items that are on their radar. So when these items are being reviewed, they don't continue to get checked at every single meeting. So that that's the that's the genesis for the conversation and and I I'd just like to go through these one at a time, hopefully come up with a consensus. We can conclude on it and and staff can either move forward or we can decide that we're okay without them. So with that, thanks, by the way, Charlie, for doing these. I certainly appreciate it. The first item was in all approvals of CUPs for vacation home rentals, bed and breakfasts, RV parks, resorts and all other multi-use tourist type ventures, we need to consider a strong condition on burn pits and open burning, perhaps something similar to below a condition as currently used to the effect that the applicant obtained proper permits prior to utilizing a fire pit on the subject property and or fire and slash all fire restrictions be followed at all times. A copy of said permit shall be filed with conditional use permit documents at the Pennington County Fire Department.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
There's already state rules and regs, if I'm correct, on fire pits and fire areas, but you want more restrictions through the county?
Well, the the conversations have gone like this and I'll everyone else hop in if if need be, but I think the thought process is if we get someone from here from out of state that are not familiar with the current condition of of the the fire permits, open fire allowance in the Black Hills, et cetera, and they just decide to go out and 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 start a campfire at a at a VHR, for example, how do they how do they get told and how do they know when they rent that VHR that the rules have changed? You can't do that right now until maybe sometime next year.
So that should probably be through the official that owns the or person that owns the VHR.
Right, but they may they may come back and say, well, it's 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 a state law. It was it was announced, but I guess the thought from from the board is is that will they will they see that announcement? Will they will they know that announcement? Or do we put it as a condition of approval that the the VHR folks need to take further responsibility on open burn permits?
That would be for all properties, but in Pennington County, I think, but I don't know how you I'm not against or for, just thinking out loud. There's a lot of people. In fact, I didn't know those different rules and regulations. I'm on the fire service board and that's where I learned them. So how do you get it through to not just, you know, VHRs but landowners in general? That was more back in the day what I was thinking about and maybe you want to do it for a conditional use permit, but I think a lot of people don't know those rules and regs.
Sure.
Not just out of town.
So there's some quick checks that can be done and I I agree with what Charlie has has said here. I I do think that you're supposed to have a fire pit permit, correct, from the National Forest Service? I don't think that there's anything wrong with with the with the county requiring that if the VHR owner wants to have that and have that be an available amenity of of their location and they should be required to get that and and submit that permit to the county. I don't see anything wrong with that. The next item is is that, you know, having the phone number listed in the standard list of items that are required to be posted in a VHR such that the VHR people, one, would have at least been notified of the rule that the rule changes on a daily basis and two, here's a phone number that they can call to cross check if what the current fire conditions are. So I I think that those are two very good things and and I I would not be opposed to having those be standard language in our in our CUPs.
So what you're saying is that the 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 renter or whomever should call a particular number and determine what fire conditions are or whether they're appropriate at that time for, is that what you're?
Yeah, so.
What would that number be? Is there a number to that effect that they can access easily or?
I believe that there's a number at the Forest Service that you can call.
Okay, well, that would seem relatively simple, could be placed as a condition.
Go ahead.
Not only a number, there's an internet if you have that available site. But one of the reasons I brought that up is most of our citizens do not know in the first place where to call to even get the fire permit to make the pit. That's a difficult number to find. So I think that should be on the responsibility of the vacation home rental person. Number two, this number, that way, the vacation home rental person is going to give them a list and most of these folks read that list and if they have to know before they start a fire that this is their responsibility, I think that's important.
Chairman.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
What you're saying is is good, Charlie, but I'm going to think I have tenants that can't even read the rules and regulations for my hotel. So I'm just saying, there's if you want to, I think it should be the VHR owner that has to post no fire pit or fire pit.
Correct.
And I think there should be a phone number to call or whatever. I just think if we're giving them, like you said, the suggestion, which is good, on fire code and then post, like I said, before they rent it, no fire pits. You don't have to put a phone number or anything on there. I think, again, it's a responsibility of the VHR owner to put that, I don't know, somewhere big in the in the place, not just on a phone number. Because like I said, they don't call the phone number, they don't read all those rules and regs, whether people thinks or not, there needs to be somewhere posted fire pit in use this today or no, basically fire danger right now, no fire pit. So it needs to be changed a little bit. And like I said, phone numbers aren't going to make a difference, I believe, I've learned that. Most of it has to be posted big enough so someone can see it.
So you're saying the responsibility should be put on the the VHR?
Oh, yeah.
Owner and they need to go up there and post that if the conditions change?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Well.
You mean every time the conditions are bad, the the owner of the property is in is required to inform the renter? Is that the idea?
So two things. The first thing we talked about was there's a there's a list. If you rent one of these places, they typically have a list of items. And one of those items would be, hey, you got to call this number before you have a fire and a fire pit to to check if open fires are even allowed. Deb's saying something slightly different. Deb's saying if that condition changes, the VHR owner has to come up there and change the rules of the rental without requiring the renters to call a number and 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 find that out for themselves.
Or Chairman, just.
This is never going to work.
Well, Jim, the main thing is is when we have a change in our rule, we just call the person. Or if they're violating the rule, we call the person. Other than that, those rules and regulations, I'm telling you, we have strict rules of regulate, they didn't see them, that kind of thing. So I I have a feeling that I didn't see him is going to come up a lot. But the bottom line is it shouldn't be the VHR. It's not going to hurt if Brittany Owens, the VHR, for her to call and say, you know, you can't have a fire pit right now. That takes you two minutes. We we do it all the time. They get they get a good amount for those VHRs, Jim. So five minutes of your two minutes of your time to tell somebody that you can't do a fire pit right now because of fire danger should be not on the people that are renting it, it should be on the owner.
I agree.
I I think that's unrealistic and and I also don't think it's necessary. I I think an owner can make a very specific and compelling series of conditions regarding what behavior is expected. And it could simply include a phone number prominently listed and say, South Dakota law requires that you make a phone call and determine the conditions. And the the owner can be very explicit and I think most people will comply. I mean, now, if it's if it's if you've got a list of 75 things and some of these people I think do put together instructions for the use of the property without any recognition that people do scan and you need to have things placed in sort of a prominent fashion in order to get across the importance of certain things over others. And I think that can be done and I but maybe I'm too optimistic about the nature of the visitors we have from into the Black Hills. But I mean, I agree 100% that I can't imagine anything more harmful, particularly in the conditions, environmental conditions we're experiencing now, than the possibility of, you know, being sangling about fires. So I I'm certainly in favor of it, but I I really do think you can make it strong enough that that people will comply. I mean, if it's a matter of simply making a phone call and you get a recorded message and or an internet deal, so anyway, but, you know, I'm not going to oppose if you want to put the onus on the back of the owner. I mean, if you want to make it their responsibility, but I think I think most renters would be pretty compliant, I think. But anyway.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
The only reason I worded it that way was because the fire pit or no fire pit was the on the old ordinance committee that establishes that was the most 50 50 item that was ever discussed. It it just broke right along 50 50 lines. 50% of people think you could have a fire pit, 50 don't. And so we left that open when we submitted it. But I see no problem if you then change it to say, if you do have a fire pit, then it or decide to have a fire pit within your our your vacation home rental application, you want that, then it's your responsibility to advise your tenants. But I have no problem with that. That's the only reason I worried the other. But most of the people that come to the Black Hills do not realize that it's not the Black Hills National Forest, it's not Rapid City Fire Department. They have to contact a particular board that says, what's the fire conditions that day? Thank you.
It sounds to me that there's somewhat of a consensus on maybe not the specifics of the requirements to go along with this, but certainly requiring the. But um, certainly requiring the um, the permit uh, for the for the fire pit itself to be added. Excuse me. Um, and then where the onus should be on on the the renter or or the owner. And I'm not opposed to making it uh, as as an owner requirement either um, for for the group. Um, so to move forward though, um, Brittany, would um, would staff be able to take what's what we've discussed here today and and maybe propose some standard language that we could send out to the group and 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 get comments on?
Yes, I believe so. Um, Jason just stated too that if the vacation home rental does not have a fire pit, because some of them just flat out don't, just because they, right, don't want to deal with it, um, then those conditions typically are left out. So it would, you know, there there's gonna be both sides.
Right.
On that.
I just wa- I I would like um, if there's i- if it if it is something that they're going to have and and you guys go up there and you see it in the yard, uh, but it wasn't mentioned in the in their application to you guys that it's a you guys haven't, you know, an item. It's like, well, this is the this is the condition that applies to that then.
Right, and I think the easiest for us, especially with these vacation home rentals and bed and breakfast, the checklist that we have is a really good tool that we use. I think adding that to the checklist would be a good way to, you know, if they're gonna have a fire pit, then we need to have a copy of their state permit. Because when we do it upfront like that, it's it's just a lot easier on them. Uh, they know what the expectation is. We know whether they're gonna have one, whether they've gone through the process even in the beginning.
Sure.
Chairman, do they have to have a state permit when they have a fire pit?
Yes.
Okay, so they already being notified, but we're still having abuse is what I'm saying. So somehow that has to move to the next step of you put it in a requirement, so they already doing the state law already. And they still aren't telling people because we're still having fire pit issues. So um, long story short, it probably does make sense then to have the owners, um.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
So.
All right, I'm gonna move on to the next one here. Clearly worded condition in should be included in all C U Ps for a hundred and eighty day R V use and R V used during construction of a dwelling on an applicant owned property. Um, and the item here was the applicant is required to have an installed and approved permitted wastewater system prior to use of the R V or shall provide the planning department paid receipts of a certified waste water disposal provider. You're just saying that sometimes we get the cart in front of the horse on this one and that they should have uh, they should have that thing in in place before they move the R V up there?
Yeah, the honey caddy or whatever, that was a perfect example today.
I I agree. I I always, I think it's kind of stunning.
I agree.
Well, when we get around to it, we'll get it in, but you know, it's hard to get somebody to do this and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I mean, the delay could be interminable, but I think most people try to be.
You have something?
But.
Jason, do you have something on that? How do you make it safe when you want to put a R V somewhere and they don't have basically the facilities set up beforehand?
Right, so we agree the honey caddy is not a viable option at all, you know, um, or dragging that R V like today down that dirt road wasn't gonna work. So a porta potty, a portlet is acceptable means of wastewater treatment for us. I mean, we can see that there are pump records for those when they're serviced, so I think for us, that's an adequate means of wastewater disposal.
I think that's what it says. I I.
And that's what they put in condition even on like today.
Makes a pain on them having to get receipts, but it it does give them alternatives of some time to install a.
Right, it does satisfy that condition for us.
So then we'll we'll adopt this two A bullet um, that I just read and you guys will pu- put together some sort of condition that says, or owner shall uh, hire an approved portlet company or something to place a facility? Is that what you were saying?
Yep, I think we just have kind of a.
Certified waste.
Already do.
Yeah, we do.
Handler.
I think his his comment in here is certified wastewater disposal provider, um, because if they have a holding tank, that would that would cover that. If they have a portlet, that would cover that. Um, if you call Kiefer or Sander, you can call them and ask them, have you been out there? Yes, they usually put them on a weekly schedule. They can tell you. Um, it's pretty, um, it's not very difficult to get that information.
Right.
Do they, they don't usually particularly move their R V up there unless they're in violation before they have the portlet or whatever, right, Jason? Cause they're not allowed, right?
Right.
See what I'm saying? Even though they do, but they're in violation. So the the rules and regs are covering that already. Um, but you're still just having, I mean, by that time, if they're coming for your C U P, you guys, they already did the rules and regs. Am I correct?
Right, so the applicants today, uh, Mr. Wagner, he had moved that R V to that spot, you know, kind of the honor system, saying that he's not living in it at this time. He's storing it there.
Right.
So before he could live in there, he had to have the approved C U P.
Okay.
And one of those conditions is that he has that portlet up there before he can stay in that.
Do you have a lot of violations that way where people are living in it before they've come get the C U P?
Uh, I think typically when that happens is when they're doing it and they didn't know they needed a conditional use permit. I think that's about the time that it happens. Not so much when they get an approved C U P that they just blatantly violate the conditions of approval. I think it's more or less after the fact.
You get a lot, but Jason, do you get a lot of people that are, just didn't know?
I'd say twenty percent of the items in this packet every two weeks are already out there, got either written up or a complaint turned in and now they're being brought through the process to get into compliance.
Okay, but what I'm, what I'm saying is.
Can I throw in one more thing? It's not in the regulations that they can, that it says the hundred and eighty day or the moving in a trailer while you're building. We put it in conditions. It's not in ordinance regulations. So what I'm suggesting here is a condition that appears every time that they have to meet.
But isn't, but what I'm asking, Charlie, maybe is Jason already has it as a condition and if they're already doing it either way and they're coming to us, they have to follow the rules and regs. So.
Till I brought this up, we were doing it about three or four different ways.
Right, typically it's a, the way that we address it is that it's situation specific. So, you know, these guys, they originally, they proposed a holding tank. And he said, well, that's not going to work because you already have an onsite wastewater treatment system permitted. So that's not gonna work. So then he's like, well, then the holding or the uh, the tank caddy, no. So I think each situation is situation dependent, so. So to have a standardized condition of approval, I'm not sure would fit.
So do you think that's a good idea, what we're suggesting on the hundred and eighty days? Is there gonna be issue with that or do you're you think it's being taken care of without changing that rule?
I feel that we address each conditional use permit on its own merits and what the applicants are proposing.
So it'd be hard to put this rule on there because it'd be different for every applicant. That's why it's always changing.
Put this rule in there, but I think that we would also have to have another specific one for whatever situation that we're addressing. So I mean, we could put that condition in there and then a more specific one afterwards.
Such that they would need a portlet.
Correct.
Yeah.
You're saying it that even if you have a standardized response, that there are gonna be situations which fall outside that.
Right.
That we need to.
Yeah, I think every situation is gonna be different, so we're gonna have to address them all specifically in different ways.
I I would just like to have us have a standardized response that was the best practice. You know, in other words, that the the uh, solution which would provide protection for the environment, provide the needs of the applicant and so forth.
Right.
That that, so and and it might be a more elaborate response than what the applicant would like. You know, some people kind of say, well, you know, maybe we could just bring a bucket up there, you know, or I mean, you know, I mean, they sometimes think that this is, and they don't realize how often they're gonna use this and so forth. So I would hope that our response would be a one that was vigorously effective, you know.
Right, so.
Like I say, best practices, not short of.
So if we can go back to my staff report uh, earlier today from Mr. Wagner, I did have in there condition number three that an onsite wastewater treatment system, construction be permit be obtained prior to the installation of any onsite wastewater treatment system on the property. So that was kind of the blanket statement. And then the next condition, number four, that within thirty days of approval, the applicant installs a portlet on the subject property as a means of wastewater disposal, if it's planned department, copy of the rental service agreement. So we did kind of have that standardized statement for two oh four J and then a more specific one for the portlet.
Except that I think this statement would have covered both of them. One of the things you don't address right there when your first statement, it doesn't say when. It does not say when. It just says you've got to do this prior to, well, prior to what?
We said thirty days.
Read that again. It doesn't say when.
Right, so the first one said that approve onsite wastewater treatment, construction permit be obtained prior to the installation of any onsite wastewater treatment system.
Doesn't say anything about moving a trailer on or anything else. You can move.
That's the permit. That doesn't mean that there's gonna be anything there.
But this would. This would say you'd have to have this before you could put the trailer there.
Doesn't the second part that you read said?
Second part.
Yes, Charlie.
Captured the, within thirty days of approval, the applicant installs a portlet.
This would make it, we'd skip the thirty days, this would still cover that.
A hundred and eighty days?
No, one statement would have covered both of those. This one statement would have covered both of those.
But didn't you put a hundred and eighty days to comply?
That's the trailer. If you're going for a permit to allow a hundred and eighty day use per year, not to build a house, you're gonna use it a hundred and eighty days. That was what I was referring. It's an ordinance and it does, and our ordinance doesn't say anything about septic or anything else. We have to have a condition that relates to the septic.
Trying to get the septic ahead of the moving whatever it is or however it's gonna go ahead of the the of the 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 need.
And you said twenty percent of the people don't comply anyway, but so eighty percent of those would be doing it right.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
Or plan to do it right. We've seen a lot of those that didn't comply. They still plan to do it right. I I don't want to hide that.
You guys see more of those because we don't see the C U P, so.
So it's just for clarification then, uh, I I like that statement. It's good. Um, do you want to leave out the more specific statement then, like?
I think you, when you need them, you you're gonna have to add them. But I think this is gonna cover uh, that eighty percent uh, with no problem. Eighty, eighty-five percent. We just tend to see it come up and then we've got to figure out what to do each time. This way, they know they've got to have receipts. This way, they know they've got to have uh, it in advance for getting the trailer moved on, whether it was for building their house or whatever. Some of these things go on. People that build their house, why not put the damn septic in in the first place?
I know.
And then put the trailer on there. They're gonna build a house.
That was a comment that I was gonna make that in those situations where there are building a home, we record the septic and not a.
Yeah, I've seen that. I I agree with you.
That has to be there anyway.
This guy in particular, he was having a hard time, just like the previous applicant, saying that he couldn't find an installer to get a septic.
I was trying to talk less. See, there's some people concerned I talk too much and and string out the meetings. So this would really reduce my pointing it out.
All right, sir, word.
So I I like two A and if they have to get a portlet, they get a portlet. Um, the next one is a condition in applicant's um, request for a secondary structure on the property prior to a primary structure. Um, the the structure garage be used for personal use only, no commercial type use and or living spaces allowed. And um, add the structure shall be uh, cold storage use only, no utilities, i.e. electric electricity, septic, sewer, service or water is allowed. What's your thoughts on the some of those? Because I.
The reason I brought it up is we see it later after we approve some of these things. They come back and they're in violation. Somebody's living in it. Or folks and they they don't understand this in the first place, start, they put the utilities right in there and next thing you know, um, their gentleman was living in one building with a camper. That that's a pretty extreme case. We we saw that. Uh, so I'm just saying at the front end, let them know the things cold storage, you want to go beyond cold storage, come back and see these folks.
I think they, I guess I haven't seen, like I said, you guys have been, I haven't seen much of that. Then we change it to accessory structure if they're changing use, if I'm correct, if they want somebody to stay in there. Am I correct? So we've changed the rules and regs on some of that as well, but they still have to follow the rules and if they don't, um, we only can catch them when we catch them.
Before Brittany replies, I wrote these up thinking of conditions that they don't, these things don't exist in the ordinance. All I'm trying to do is especially when you're talking out to towners, so they know that when they see this condition, they have an understanding of what the line in the sand they have to meet. That's all I'm asking. And I think some of these folks don't understand that or their intent is to to edge around it in the first place. That would be.
So just a couple of um, comments on this item. Um, when we do get the building permits that we have a very, you know, on our property notes, this is no commercial use. That's pretty standard on any of these large accessory buildings. Um, we do run into problems where these do get converted into living quarters at some point. Um, we typically don't find them equalization, we'll find them and notify our office. Um, so then those C U Ps in. But um, I think once we start going through the building code and building inspections, some of this will um, kind of go away, I think. Cause there'll be some accountability. Now, when they go out and build it, there's not really an accountability. We don't really see what they built because we don't verify it.
I think I'd agree with that too. If you're going through a building code thing where it's going to be more extensive and the person building it is aware of these requirements, I agree, then then why do it?
Yeah, and I think this um, condition would be good in that in that sense because especially when we start doing building codes and building inspections, we can verify that. At this time, it's pretty difficult. We can say, tell them not to. We can see the exterior of it, but.
Well, but they're coming in asking for this uh, prior to a primary structure. And I and I think that if this wording is in there, then it's going to require them to have the conversation with you about either what they think they're asking for and what they know they're asking for. Um, not sure how to put that, but uh, if they just come in and they they say they want a garage, but then they run all this stuff in there and they're living in it. We don't find it for five or ten years, right?
Correct.
And now we're saying you're, you just want a garage, right? This is just gonna be cold storage, right? Are you gonna, are you gonna run power and water and sewer there? And I I think that question needs to be asked um, upfront during the C U P if they want to build something out there prior to building the home first. That's all, I think that's all this is going to do, um, is is force that communication upfront in my mind instead of after the fact.
The only other issue that we run into with something like this is when that transfers the property, if they sell it, then the new owners, they don't necessarily know that there's even a conditional use on that property. They just assume they have a garage. They'll go in and and do other things. So there there's a couple of things um, with it too, especially if these go on complaint basis only, which they do from time to time. Um, so I think under the sale or transfer would have to be something where you'd look at it, where they'd have to make sure that the new new owners are aware of the conditions. Because if someone purchases it, they just look at it, well, I have a garage on a piece of property. They don't know that there's a C U P. They make alterations and things. So that's another, that's another.
It's imperfect.
Yeah.
And it will be imperfect, no matter how you craft this. It will be imperfect, but yeah.
In all honesty, at some point, it gets caught because of equalization does, you know, do through their process. So and we work pretty well with our office, so we do eventually get that information. It just sometimes isn't right of way. Or right away, it's, you know, within a couple of years or so.
So agree with adding that as a condition?
Yes, I would say.
Okay. Um, the next one is um, concerns regarding the use of D B As in our applicant submissions and final approvals. We're seeing more and more uh, use of multiple business names, LLCs and agent entities in a single application and do not have any idea of the legal basis for these names or whether or not we are compromising our regular regulatory position and executing enforcement of the approval of the approved items. Um, in this instance, though, you said um, we probably need to get the uh, state's attorney involved in this to to draft something?
I I agree. I don't think that's anything that we can, but it it does concern me. We saw the one application for, what was it? Bed and breakfast with five different names? Was it a V H R? With five different names. That concerns me. Especially one of them was an LLC, which is a state requirement. You've got to file a report and be in good stead and your taxes are paid, all sorts of things. So it, no, I don't think we should do it by condition. I think it has to be come from the state's attorney whether we should be doing it or not.
You're just saying that um, the property, whoever's at the end of the line of all the names needs to be known upfront? Is that what you're saying?
Right, that should be who's getting the permit, uh, whatever the item is. It shouldn't be all these other names and and people collecting taxes over here that maybe may or may not be an agent of the other. Make it all under one name and that's who from a regulatory point we would want. If they violate it, you've got to have one person to go to.
Well, you can have five LLCs. You just need one point of contact on a V H R.
Yeah, but don't your permits require either the agent or the. Yeah, but don't your permits require either the agent or the, or the applicant? And don't you require the owner on the applicant regardless if the agent fills it out?
A CUP application requires a notarized signature from the landowner. So the landowner is the one that actually signs, or the landowner's power of attorney or, or legal agent has to sign it, and that has to be notarized on that.
So regardless, if we have five LLCs that you have to walk through, whoever owned the property and was in responsible charge of that property at the time when the permit application was submitted, was known by the county.
Correct, and our position has been with other items and the, the position of the state's attorney, I don't want to speak for her, she's not here today, but is it falls back on the property owner. So any type of violations or anything, any legal actions that are taken are of the property owner of record. So that is one thing, but that would be more of a conversation for Megan to weed out some of the, the LLCs and the other things and how that.
Brittany, to make it quicker, the one that I was thinking of the most was we didn't come, the sales tax license with an LLC as the backup, that's a, our ordinance specifically says the, the, the sales tax license has to be in the name of the owner. Follow me, that, we were in, so how do we approve something like that? That's what I'm saying. If we get it, so some direction from the state's attorney, maybe we can approve something like that, I don't know. If they, if that's the managing partner of the LLC is the owner, I'm fine with that. But we, some of these are coming from out of state, and we don't know what laws that we're going to run into and this sort of thing. That's why I, I just think this is beyond.
Sure.
It's just a problem, and I think we should look at before it gets out of hand, especially with the out of state owners we're seeing.
Is this something that you can run by her? And then just send me an email on and see if we can work it from there? All right, sounds like we have resolved several items here, so I look forward.
I did have one other that didn't, that took up a lot of time, I'm talking to Brittany about it, instead, if we could solve it, we'll save fifty percent of our variance requests, and that's the idea, through a building permit, locate a property corner for these people before they start moving structures into the right of way and everything else. But that can be handled through the billing permit, not through the.
Require a, a survey.
Correct.
Before they get too close to.
But it does cost them something, that's what Brittany and I are kicking around right now.
Yeah, excuse me, how many more items are on this list?
I don't have any more, Sandra.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what?
You know, I really apologize, Sandra, but this is part of being here, none, there are no more. I'm trying to be clear here.
All right, it's okay.
Thank you. But that's, I'm sorry, but that does get feathers ruffled, last week ruffled feathers. I'm sorry I brought it, I turned this in how long ago, Rich?
Hmm, I think two meetings ago, so a month?
So it wasn't any, it's not a surprise to extend this meeting, thank you.
I just asked the question, and I couldn't hear the answer.
Yeah, there's no more.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, update on trip Adams County, Colorado.
So I just wanted to give the planning commission an update. Staff, along with Commissioner Hancock, we did a tour in Adams County, Colorado, of some marijuana facilities. We did two large culti, or cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities and some dispensaries. We reached out to Adams County about a month ago, and just kind of asking them about how they do, do their permitting process and their licensing process. And we just kind of felt like, well, one, they were very accommodating and, and very helpful, two, they invited us down, and even the industry, you know, welcomed us to come in and do some tours, so we could kind of put our eyes and, and get some contacts on, you know, working through and developing through some of these, this marijuana legislation. It will affect this board, you guys will see some of these requests coming through because they are falling into some land use requirements. So it's important that this commission and this board is aware of kind of where we're going with these, because you will see some of the requests prior to the licensing. And Megan's not here, she can speak on it much better, but in Colorado, it's a little different, they go to the state first to get their license, and then they come to the community. In South Dakota, it's completely the opposite. So everything will get vetted through the counties as far as time, place and manner, and then those recommendations will go up to the state, and the state will determine who gets a license, and then they'll come back to the county.
So we would approve something pending a state permit?
Correct.
Why would we do that?
Because we have to approve the time, place and manner. That's our, that's where our authority lies in these regulations.
So why does Colorado law is different, is that?
Yes, it's flip-flopped. So they actually go through all of this stuff with the counties, and then they go to the state to get their license once they met all of the county requirements.
So I'm a little fearful when you have the smallest forms of government doing what I consider to be pretty essential regulatory decision-making. It seems to me it would be much more sensible to have a state, as they evidently do in Colorado, and then say, okay, now the county will, you know, then apply it in the county. I just hope we don't end up having to wrestle with issues beyond our, our powers to.
So we have to follow state law, and then we can add what we want or what we need to that. So you always have to follow the state, no matter what.
Could the state change the way they do this?
They'll probably be changing it like Colorado for the next ten years, kind of like when they did alcohol or prohibition. There's always going to be, like Adams County said, they're forever changing the rules because they're finding more and newer and different rules and regs that actually work for the sale, and then you already know that it's going federal, they're trying to push it through federal right now with rules and regs. Bottom line is, they track it seed to sale, and they have to track, track it seed to sale. Those facilities are huge, they said to cap them, Adams County, that's the, that's the most thing I heard was, don't be reactive, be proactive, listen to the, the people that are in the industry, and people like them that actually have watched Denver and other places have a lot of issues because of just letting it go however it goes, and then go, oh, we need, hold on a sec, we need to change these rules, this isn't working. Adams County was proactive, worked with the industry to move forward in a positive way of making for medical, which is now one percent, in Adams County, is only one percent of their sales of marijuana into recreational. So we went to some really, really professional places that, like I keep telling people, like in Cheech and Chong, or movies that are black market or whatever looking sales, I was thinking more, we were going into some crazy places, and the places we went in were more professional than most businesses. You go in a lot of times because just, they want to keep those licenses, so they're very regulated in a sense of their own, they self-regulate, they turn people in a lot is what we heard. Hemp was the biggest issue with code enforcement. We found out that hemp is grown outside, and this marijuana, in order to be productive, needs to be grown inside. So they, you know, when people call, they say, did you see it outside? And then, then they know it was hemp. Hemp actually, as Brittany has been saying to the commissioners, actually marijuana will turn into hemp, it will take over and turn marijuana into hemp. So the people, Joaquin, Andrea and Brandon, if, if even a conference call with us and this planning commission would be good, when we start doing some of this, I think would be cool, that way you could ask them questions. Maybe they could have a couple, a cultivation or a manufacturer or some people there to answer your questions, I think that would be way cool, if we could have them on video and you could ask your questions, because I think part of being proactive and not reactive is to make sure that you can, because me, being ADI is reactive, and then I go down there and then I understand, because I'm one of those people, I'm reactive, but I also will come back and say, okay, I'm wrong. I looked it up, I did my due diligence to figure out the rules and regs. They're doing a hell of a job down there, and they have five hundred thousand people, not just a hundred and thirteen that we have in our county and cities. So just root for that, start looking at Adams County, start looking at some of the rules and regs, we'll have those, Brittany will, we can't use those, but they're good reference for what our team has been doing. Brittany was awesome, Jason, he's the one that actually found the county that we went to, thank you, Jason, great, great choice. Megan, who met a couple lawyers, one that was with Nable, which is a huge company that sells marijuana all over the world, it sounds like, she's hooked up with their lawyer who looks, acts like dead, a little rugged, but good. And she answered truthfully, and then who else do we have?
Dwayne.
Dwayne, Dwayne was a good, Dwayne was more quiet, but he was still, was learning from Joaquin a bunch of the rules and regs and what to look for. So the cultivation units were huge, like warehouse, like thousands of plants, it was cool looking. The guy was very professional, who showed us around and from seed to sale kind of stuff, and they do have the tags on them. And then we went to a manufacturer, which was Hydrocarbons, and they, they basically squeezed the resin out of by this hydrocarbon thing, and then they make all these dabs, and what we learned was dabs are chatter, wax crumbles, all this other stuff, which I had no idea, rigs are the stuff you put it in. I learned everything about marijuana, I even got high, okay. The smell, they said that you cannot get like, you can't get it, oh, Jesus. Three places we went in, the third one, maybe even the second, I was Jason, I didn't, I didn't walk into those other confined rooms, I was like, holy cow. And it's not smoking, it's just from the flower smell, they call the buds the flowers, trichomes are the sugars on there, and the cannabinoids were the THC and the tetra, what were they called, whatever, were the flavors. So it's weird how they, they, they tell you about flavor, the THC, you think in the power is just from what kind of plant you grow, well, you can have, you can cut a plant or a flower in half, and they said on that same flower, it could be really strong on one half and not the other, the other half of the flower, so it's not always measured by the, the kind is a good way to put it. So kind of crazy, that's why I said, if we could have somebody and manufacturers visit with the planning commission, so you guys kind of get schooled up on some of that, it's very interesting, and it's very mind-boggling thinking, business on the way to that black market, I was thinking more black market. So people are chemists, they are marine biologists that went in this, principals, teachers, whoever drew these lotteries was what they had, got them. So you'd be surprised of all the people you meet and thinking, like I said, I, I was thinking he was going to meet Cheech and Chong down there, and he had a big bud area, cultivation area, so not quite like that, but that's the last movies I watched about that kind of stuff back in the day, so, back when I was eighteen, forty years.
Are there any updates from the state? You know, we put a moratorium on this item, pending rules, I think promulgated through the state health department. And I, we were targeting maybe October, November timeframe, is that still accurate?
Yes, and they did release their rules, they're in draft form, so it's looking like the end of September, beginning of October, it's moving quite quickly, so we are going to start moving quite quickly. One thing just to note with Deb's, on all those facilities that we went up to, you couldn't smell anything on the outside. So there are types of ventilation systems and things like that, they were unmarked facilities, you wouldn't know that most of them were there, except for the dispensaries. Adams County's rule is, you know, one small sign for the dispensary, that's it, you know, so, so they have a lot of good, you know, regulations and stuff that I think that we can piggyback on. They took a very conservative approach, they did a lottery, so they only did a few licenses of each kind at a time. They required very strict developmental regulations, operation plans, development reviews, things like that, before they would even allow them to get into the licensing. Some of their, they called them opportunities, when they won the lottery, a lot of them didn't even make it through the development process and it got down into the waitlist. So it's quite a process, even after our rules are in place, just to get those doors open and meet all the requirements. I think our state's requirements and Colorado's requirements for the types of facilities, for the security that's required, for the seed to sale, the tracking, all of the logistics is, is very similar, so it's, it's going to be quite a process. The security is, there's security everywhere.
I'm just concerned about, once again, that, that counties should not be expected to do this largely on their own. I, I realize we have a function, but that most of the regulatory work will have been done by state people, because I, I just, I mean, what, what do you do in a county like Mead County, or what if somebody wants to open a marijuana shop in, up at, you know, Buffalo or someplace like that? Who, I mean, how is that regulated? That's what I'm saying. I hope there's a powerful state presence, because I don't think we have the capacities.
Well, state through the Colorado didn't do so well, obviously through the cities like Denver and stuff, so like this county had to do their own rules, basically based on trial and error of other people, so.
The population of Adams County?
Five hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's almost the size of half of the state of South Dakota, so they do have resources, we were a little more modest, I guess, and I just don't want to see us, I don't want to see us spending a lot of time trying to promulgate regulations and so forth that are consuming our time when we could be doing something else.
Well, with the time, place, manner, they have to get our approvals before the state will even consider them. So they basically have to show that whatever facility, whatever location meets the time, place, manner requirements of the county. So if they.
So that's going to be our fundamental.
That is going to be ours. So the state won't even consider their licenses, is my understanding, now Megan's not here, until they have approvals from the county or the city.
She said that, Brittany, that they had to have our approval first, which is backwards.
From, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I attended a four-hour continuing education class on marijuana in Colorado, I'd be happy to forward it to you if you're interested or anything else. It was extremely informative and answered a lot of questions and addressed a lot of concerns.
Mr. Chair, could you provide that to all of us?
I'm sorry, what?
Have you got a copy where we could get copies and provide to all of us so we could read it?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can mass email. What it is, is there's two, two attachments in the, in the email, they're PowerPoints that go through.
Yeah, if you could just email that to Jerry, and Jerry can disseminate it out to the board and to the planning commission.
Like I said, it was extremely informative, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the county board report? Or excuse me, on the update on trip from Adams County?
No.
Okay, county board report, item twenty.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the July twelfth Planning Commission meeting, with the exception of rezone twenty-one down sixteen for Keith Lau, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Items from the public, none noted. Items from staff?
No.
Items from the membership? None. Item twenty-four adjournment, is there a motion?
No, moved.
Motion in second for adjournment for the discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned.